Good evening. It is six thirty-two on May sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. This is the night for our committee meeting for the Northern Lebanon School District Board of Directors. We are meeting as a committee of the whole, as we always do. I do call this meeting to order. All right, first, we have any presentations today? No, no. Public comment. We were, we informed the public to let us know by three o'clock this afternoon if there was any interest in public comment. We received none, so there will be no public comments. We'll move immediately to our agenda for tonight. We do have three voting items this evening that we need to address first, and then we'll establish the calendar for next week. So we'll turn it over to Dr. Messinger for items four point one through four point three.
Okay, yes, a couple of voting items. The first is, we did go out to bid on, during construction, we've found some asbestos that obviously needs removed. And we went out to bid on that. The bid came in, the bids came in, and we had four bids, five bids, four bids, four bids. And that was the, the recommended bid to remove that. We have it on tonight's meeting so that we can get started as quickly as possible because obviously there's areas where they need to get, take care of that before they do additional work. Did you want me to do all three at the same time?
Yeah.
The, I, the use of funds agreement, that is the IU pass-through funds. It goes to them, that comes back, comes to us. The, they had the incorrect years of dollar amount on the, on the document last month, and so that's been corrected. And, and that was there to revote. And then finally, a student agreement.
Okay, I think what we'll do is we'll, we'll do a motion to adopt all three of these together unless there's a will from the rest of the board to separate these. Any preference? Yeah, okay. All right. Any questions for Dr. Messinger regarding these three issues, these agreements? Okay, hearing none. Motion to approve items four point one through four point three. Thank you, Director Murray. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Director Moyer. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving items four point one, four point two, and four point three, please indicate with a yes or an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. My vote's also a yes, so motion carries unanimously. We'll move to items for discussion, but before I do that, thank you to Vice President Williams, who reminded me that I needed to state publicly that the board met an executive session immediately prior to this committee meeting to discuss matters of legal importance and personnel. Okay, with that said, we'll move to the consent calendar, and we'll move through all these items. It's a full agenda.
Okay, and I anticipate some of these being moved to discussion, but things that we're prepared to have on for voting for next week. Obviously, the first couple were normal approval of minutes, the student activity count, and cash disbursement. Those will be there for you. Five point four, it is that time of year. Proposed final budget, the language is there, the budget is attached. You have received the synopsis. We will have the synopsis also listed under public for next, for the voting meeting. I am assuming that you would want to move that to discussion, but, and Leanne is not with us tonight. However, if you have questions in the meantime, she said to email, she will get back to you before next Tuesday, or she'll be prepared to talk about it next Tuesday if it's something you want to talk about publicly. Any questions that I can answer at this point? And again, if you'd like to move that to discussion, we'd go ahead and do that.
In the interest of, yeah, in the interest of addressing any questions that may come up between today and next week, I would recommend that it be on discussion. Any thoughts? Okay, let's do that. Let's move budget to a gen, to a discussion. What about any, any directors with the first three items? I assume not, but just wanted to check any reason to move that to discussion. Okay, so five point one, five point two, five point three will be on consent calendar. Five point four will be on discussion, and then we have a couple of remaining ones here. Actually, a lot.
Okay, five point six is the Lancaster Loaded IU thirteen, oh, I'm sorry, I missed it. Five point five is the amendment to the Articles of Incorporation for IU thirteen. Those Articles of Incorporation govern how the IU is run. Obviously, the IU has provided many important services for us for a long, long time. Stacy's been our representative to that. You come and talk highly of a lot of the things that they've done. And they're an integral part of, of, of our professional development, our special education. Those were, if I, if I remember correctly, I think established in nineteen forty-five and are expiring. And they are ready to renew those, and it is a fifty-year renewal for us, and every school district in the, that is involved in IU thirteen will be voting on this to renew those.
And if I could just chime in briefly, so this is the joint authority that permits the school districts that make up the IU to own property, because an IU cannot own property under current state law, which folks are attempting to change. And so what we did is to confirm that all you have to do is pass this resolution. Anything relating to this joint authority is for the IU joint authority to advertise separately. So it's just requiring this board's approval, extending the life of that ability to own property, and if at some point in the future, state law change, changes, we're set up for either example.
Thanks. To give an example, I'm actually the, the representative for the district for this. So one Thursday a month, we have a, a meeting, and, and there's a lot of talk, there's discussions there about building improvements. When Jonestown came up for sale, and I wasn't allowed to vote on this, but when Jonestown came up for sale, that was brought up at this meeting, and they were, you know, they, they had to approve that. So that's kind of what the joint authority does. Any other questions on that? Okay, five point six is their annual general operating budget. They do a little highlight thing there for you. They put the budget proposal there for you. And all the documents that would support their budget. Again, that's something that would go in front of all the school districts in, in IU thirteen for approval, but that is, it's that time of year for us to approve their budget as well. Any questions on that? Okay, five point seven is our annual agreement, where they do some occupational and physical therapy for us. So that is listed there, that agreement. It is time to renew that agreement with them. As well as, it is the month of IU thirteen documents. We are part of a legal consortium, a legal consortium, and the next one, the technical legal consortium, provides information for us that sometimes comes in the form of monthly webinars, that sometimes comes in the form of emails, bulletins that come out. And while we pay, we obviously have Brooke that handles a lot of our legal things. There are, there's quite a bit of professional development in terms of attending webinars and/or information that comes our way from these two. The cost is relatively minimal and is split between all the districts in IU thirteen. Questions on that? The five point ten is the CTC budget. It's also time to approve their budget. I know that both Director Klein, and I, I think you might have been Director Moore, maybe at a budget meeting or when they were talking about it too. I don't know, is there anything thrilling there that you wanted to add?
I'll just say there's an overall budget increase of three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, or four point four percent. The district contributions of that increase, when I say district comp, I mean all the counties, is three hundred and seventy thousand. Or four point one five percent of their overall budget is us county schools paying for it. Let me just break it down even a little further to our little sliver. Northern Lebanon is going to be a two point zero five percent increase to the CTC's budget next year, so.
And that's.
It's not outrageous. Their biggest, their, their biggest expenditures like us is, is, is teacher salaries. And what they do every year for their teacher salaries is they take a, the average, the county average. So say, they look at all the county agreements. When they go to negotiations, we like to try to go for the average.
And those percentages are based on enrollment, so obviously Cedar Crest and Lebanon pay a higher percentage than we do, and they'll pay a lower percentage than we do.
Dr. Messinger, can you explain what the Voke Ed subsidy is? What the, it's in the budget, it's in the summer, operating budget summary?
Say it again.
It's a Voke Ed subsidy?
Okay, I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll get, I'll, I'll get a good explanation for you, and we'll talk about it next week.
I mean, it, it, it's nice because it does lower, I mean, it lowers the cost, you know, significantly, but I was just curious what that, what that is.
You know, CTC is an unusual entity in terms of education because they get money from quite a few different resources. There's Perkins grants that are involved. There's donations that are, that coming from other just, sorry, other businesses in the area. Let me find out as much detailed information as I can before I answer that question for you, and I can get that to you.
And, thank you. And I, I missed the, the opportunity to ask you a question regarding the, the technological, or technology legal consortium. I noticed that it's written slightly different than the special ed consortium for the, talking about the IU thirteen. The, the special ed consortium document says that all twenty-three school districts are included in that, and it gives a breakdown as to how much each, how much, the exact amount each school district pays. But in the technology consortium, it doesn't, it doesn't say that. It just gives a one flat fee. And I guess I have two questions. Is, is, is every school involved in that? And then what is our official amount that, that we would pay?
Those are great questions. Let me get confirmation from them again.
Okay.
And I'll share that next meeting.
Thank you.
Sure. Anything else with those? Okay.
Director Williams, would you like to have that on a discussion or?
No.
Leave it, leave it on consent?
It can, it can stay on consent. I just.
Just the answers. Yeah, great.
I don't know if it's helpful, but it would be, I, there's not a way to know how much our share would be for the technology until all the districts have voted to be a part of it.
Well, and that, that's basically my question, but it's, is.
I can get last year's number, though.
Okay.
But yeah.
Right, well, I mean, it gives, it's, it tells us what the whole, what the full amount is. But my, my question was, do we know if every school is involved yet or not? We don't know that answer?
Right, because everybody's going to vote on it around the same time.
Right, okay.
We wouldn't be in a position to know, like Dr. Messinger said, we'd know what we spent last year, how many participated last year, but we wouldn't be able to tell you that there's ten districts going in this year.
It's voted on in May, and we have one of the typically earlier times in May, so.
Well, then that, that answers my question. I just noticed how, how the two were different. One was very specific, and the other one was, was sort of vague.
But I can get you, I can get you how many did it this year.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, five eleven is something that is, I don't want to say, it's not new, new, but it is something that there's been an emphasis on, and that is dual enrollment agreements. The state would like board approval on dual enrollment agreements. If you remember, too, there was some led, a grant opportunity two years ago where school districts could get money toward dual enrollment to provide the students to take dual enrollment. And so they're asking for us to keep these on file. These are schools that our kids have taken dual enrollment classes from this year, so everyone that we've, everyone that we've had the opportunity to, to do dual enrollment, and this will be a growing list. We will bring those dual enrollment agreements to you. And, and I'm, I'm hoping that they bring back some of that funding for kids. We, if you remember, we did that last year. When it comes time here at the end of the year, we'll get you a total dollar amount on that, and how many kid, excuse me, how many kids participated? And then we'll have to make a decision if we're going to continue that with or without the state funding. But we'll get you the figures for this year, so we can make a decision on that moving forward, but those agreements are there for you. We also do a, the, we do a homeless agreement in terms of, it's carbon-lehigh, right, Kelly?
Yeah, and it's professional development and just having access to their reps.
Yeah, and sometimes we get faced with a situation where we don't know an answer. It doesn't cost us anything, but it's an agreement with them that they provide services for us in terms, in the area of homelessness. The agreement with the Commonwealth University of Pennsylvania is for student teachers or junior students, or any students that are doing fieldwork with us. Okay, five point one four. So you have heard me talk now a couple of times about McGrath and how, how much I, I feel that this is a, a great step for us in the area of harassment, discrimination, bullying, and how the, the investigatory process, the documentation process, and how strong it is. Unfortunately, we had started this under a grant that we had received through IU thirteen. Well, IU thirteen was the one that facilitated the, the discussion with McGrath. That, their grant funding has been removed at this point. And so if we would like to finish the process, we're going to have to pay for that. We were able to negotiate the first year at half price because we had not anticipated that. And then there are two more years of ongoing training. The, the full cost is seven thousand dollars, and.
What's that?
Annually, right. And so we would like to continue that, and I believe the money is worth it. So this would be an agreement with them, and instead of the grant, we'd be funding that as a district. And I will also say, sometimes it gets, it gets asked. All of these things that involve money, the IU budget, the CTC budget, the McGrath, they are in our budget now at this point. We're not bringing anything to you tonight that Ms. Martin has already put in our budget, but this would be, give us the ability to continue with that training, if the, if the board is willing to do that. Questions on that?
So, so these numbers are included in the current budget?
Yes.
I had a question on the dual enrollment. Is there a way to know how many students took advantage of that and like compare it to?
Yeah, that's, that's what I was saying in terms of getting you the, the, the number. I'll get you the number of students and was, when the school year's over, because we still have some kids that are still taking classes and haven't been reimbursed yet. As soon as, as soon as we've done that, I'll get you the number of students and the dollar amount. Okay, five point one five is our annual increase for classified staff. Five point one six is what we call our X value for Act ninety-three. It is time once again to appoint a board treasurer. We have been using Leanne Martin as treasurer. We thought about sliding in, you know, maybe a thousand dollars and to see if anybody noticed, but she didn't get paid anything. It's zero, salary is zero dollars. But she is, has been the treasurer for the board. We have our monthly substitute list. We have some employment. Employment's listed. We're, I'll just, we'll mention one thing. It's nice to see Kathy Smith returning to us to, to help out with a, a long-term substitute position. Previously taught physics for a long, long time and is, is teaching geometry now for us. And then, and then we are, Mrs. Bruce, I don't want to jinx you, but staffing, we're in pretty good shape right now, right, for next year. Yeah, she has been interviewing and interviewing, and we are, we are, we are pretty much toward the end for now. There's always some changes over the summer, but for the end, to the end for now. We did have a resignation, Rachel Martin, a general education aide, and after twenty-two years of service, I believe, we'll talk about her a little more at the end of the year. Mrs. Herzog is leaving. She was our head custodian here at the elementary previously at Fredericksburg. There are a few coaches there that just updates. We did have one paid assistant, assistant that had a retroactive resignation to April ninth, and then, so we took a volunteer and then prorated it for that period of time. And, and went from a volunteer to a paid assistant, and then also another prorated position that was unable to start at the beginning. I do know that next week there will be a few more coaches added. Assistant coaches for next year will be added. We're compiling that list and getting it ready for you, but those were positions that we had for this past spring. There are some.
Before we, before we do the policies, because I know that we may have some discussion on the policies, is there any desire from any directors to move any of those other items that we just went over to discussion? I don't remember where we, I think it must be the, maybe, okay, looks like five point, five point eleven, what, five point eleven dual enrollment up to five point two one. Any desire to move any of those to discussion for next week? Okay, hearing none, then we'll keep all those on consent. I just wanted to make sure we get those done. Okay, thanks.
I just, real quick, I just have a quick question about the dual enrollment. This is more of. This is more of a curiosity thing, I guess, is how, are we actively recruiting for dual enrollments or are these student-initiated or how does that typically work?
It's both. They're kids that know where they're going to, I'll use my daughter as an example. Her junior, the summer of, between her junior and senior year, she knew where she was going to school, she had committed to that school. They told her that they had dual enrollment classes available. If she wanted to take some her senior year, she maneuvered her schedule around completely. She wound up taking seven dual enrollment classes that year and went into college with 21 credits. Matter of fact, while I'm talking about my daughter, in, in three years' time, she's graduating on Saturday, so I will be attending her graduation. But that was made possible by the dual enrollment classes that she was able to take her senior year. We do talk to kids about that opportunity, particularly if there's scheduling conflicts. We, we have, because we're a small school district, there are 90-plus courses, and we're trying to do things to help alleviate this, but 90-some courses that are only offered one section in the, in the schedule. When you have that many courses, there's conflicts and people have to make decisions. One of the ways you can get around having to make a decision and be able to take a course that you might want to take is to take a dual enrollment course. Accelerate would be another way to do that. But dual enrollment is valuable because for the most, if you know where you're going, the credits are definitely transferring out. But even if you don't, my son is taking two English courses this year that will transfer pretty much no matter, well, we know where he's going now, but at the time we didn't. So we certainly, we certainly try to make that known to kids, but colleges are also making it known to kids when, if they know where they're going.
Thank you.
Okay, policies. There are several policies, these are not, there are two policies we're going to talk about in a minute. These are not quite as controversial as the two we're going to talk about in a minute. These are policies that we've already revised over the past five, six years, but there's been updates for one reason or another. You know, PSBA will give us updates and drafts, and now that we've gone through one full-time, we're going back through and now catching some of these updates. You can see that, you can see that, you know, these are the topics that are listed there. We can certainly move those to discussion. I don't know how much of a chance you've had to look over, over those. If you have questions, again, feel free to let me know, and I'll try to have answers for you next week. But those policies, those policies we will be voting on next week. The two I'm going to talk about in information, we won't necessarily be voting on next week, it'll be June. But we're going to talk about them this week and possibly again next week. Anything that stood out or any questions now that you might want me to look at for those policies that are listed right there?
I noticed that we still have some comments on the policies that need to be cleaned up. For example, on policy 111, I'm sorry, 100 programs, we have a note that it needs some legal review still, it needs a correct reference before it goes on for next week.
The references, are you talking about the legal reference?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that is something that we're not able to correct. That's something that gets corrected by PSBA when we send it to them for uploading. It's the one piece that we're not able to do in-house before they do it.
Great, okay, thanks.
Well, feel free to holler if there's something specific you see. I mean, I'll give you one example of something, like the non-resident students thing. You know, there's been changes in the law for, for non-resident students and what their rights are. So, you know, when that happens, policy gets updated. So, you know, things like that, some of these, some of these we sit and we do, and, and, you know, we kind of, we can do them in about two minutes because they're so minor changes to what we have, and some of them are a little more extensive.
Right. Okay. All right, any questions on those? Leave them on consent? Any desire to move those to discussion? Okay, great, we'll leave those policies on consent then. Thank you.
Okay, so informational items, and I put informational, but in reality, we want board feedback on some of this. The first thing, the first thing I'll ask for feedback is this. I am really proud of our curriculum cycle, I'm really proud of the fact that we are going back through and revising things. This is the last set of documents that had been started prior to us introducing the new template next year. The documents you get will be on our new template. Although I will, I did notice that in some of them, that just the thinking process of the new template, did, did help some of them make a few changes along the way. But anyway, what I need to know from the board is, you know, you're going to have them for a little bit of time, but there's a lot of them. Will you be ready next week if I put them on discussion, or would you like until June to spend more time looking at them? I don't know how, I remember Director Blau at our workshop talking about, there's a lot of reading.
I'd probably like to do them personally.
Okay. And I, and I also, I guess the third choice would have been, there's a lot that are just revised, that there's not much new, but there's a few that are new courses that you might want to look at. I could also, we could just vote on the revisions too, and I mean, that's a possibility, but if you want, if you'd like more time, I could, I hear one that would like more time, is that the consensus? Some of you are okay, some of you.
I think with a number of them, more time, or maybe splitting them and doing some.
Should I do the revisions? Director Blau, would that be okay? If I do the revisions now, and then the new courses, we'll wait until June so you can look over them? Okay, let's do that. Yeah, they want to know. Yeah.
Would it be beneficial to swap that and do the new courses next week?
I think there's only a few new courses, so the majority of teachers are probably in the revision category. Yeah. Okay, great.
I just have a question. The curriculum that's new for next year, how do students know, I mean, do the, I guess my question is, is if we're approving curriculum for something that's new for next school year, and here we are in May, June, I know students have already selected their schedules for next year. So were these classes included as an option pending approval or?
So what happens is that the career planner lists the description, and if you, we go over the, we go over the career planner in the fall with the board, or late fall. The career planner lists the description, just a description, the curriculum may not be done at that point of a course, and then it's put on there. If the board would vote no, then when we go to run a schedule, we would not put kids, obviously, in that class, to a particular class. So like, I'll give you an example, the small engine class, I just happen to know off the top of my head, 90 kids selected that as a quest to take. The, actually, the genocide study class, I believe it's 40. You know, and, and so, you know, we, if, but if it's not board-approved, it's just kind of a similar process to a course that, you know, for whatever reason, sometimes a course doesn't have, only has a few kids, and then we don't run that course because, you know, we can wait till the following year because there's not enough students. But in this particular case, the board has to approve the curriculum before we ultimately make the decision to run the course, even though the kids know that it's a possibility.
I just, what, my, my main concern was, students know about the class.
Yep, they do.
And they have an opportunity to sign up. Thank you.
Some of these lists are new, were they, do we previously offer them? Because I thought we had like AP United States History already.
Yeah, it's a revision.
Oh, okay, I was just looking at the ones, it doesn't say revision next.
Yeah, I can separate that out for you so you know which ones are which.
Gary, are there any courses on here that no one is signed up for that you don't think will be running? Do we know that yet?
So there are courses that they will not run. I couldn't tell you if they are on this particular list or not. I, per administrative regulation, any courses that are under 10 that they are considering running, they need to meet with me to go over. We actually had that meeting yesterday, and we talked through some, I'll be truthful, a lot of those courses wind up being AP courses, and we run them, we run them, but although there are a few that we're trying to alternate years on now, you know, because just not enough kids are, are in some of them. And we do offer a good selection of AP courses. So sometimes it's hard to get numbers for that. Okay, the fun one. So, over the course of this year, we've had discussions about cell phone usage. We, we took a look at the electronic device policy during one of our policy meetings and put together a policy that, a draft again, that would basically only allow cell phone usage prior to the instructional day, including district transportation. So, you know, that's going to run from when you get to school till when you leave, or potentially if you're going to CTC, you're not using it on, you know, you're not using it on the bus there. That would be new for us. I mean, while we have a policy in place that is restrictive, middle school students already have a situation where they do not use cell phones throughout the course of day, but high school students during their transitions, during lunch, and sometimes at teacher discretion. This would eliminate that completely. And so, you know, and, and a number of you have expressed a desire for that. If you remember, Dr. Ebert was here, we talked briefly about that not too long ago, and we talked about the number of discipline referrals that have to do with cell phone usage. So we put together a policy that would represent that. Putting in, putting it in front of the board for thoughts, we can talk about it this week, we can talk about it next week, and then ultimately we would vote in June. We can tweak language between the, you know, between this time and then, but, Director Namm, whatever.
Yeah, I think, so one of the issues that we, that came up during our discussion of the policy when we were trying to form it was, how do we, how do we make it clear that there may be opportunities, like if you're on your way to a game or, or something, you know, after, outside of school? So take a look at that and see if there's, you know, any way that you think we, we can tweak that to make that a little more clear. But just for clarification, Gary, you said, so, so this would apply during the time students are under supervision of the district, so that includes the buses?
Yep.
Right, okay. I just wanted to make sure that, that that was clear. So the intent here is that no cell phones will be in use from the time you get on the bus until the time you get off the bus, if you're under district control. Now, the handbook, the handbook can specify other alternatives or exceptions that students may be able to use that when, when essentially the school day is, is concluded. But if, take a look at it and see if there's any, any language revisions that you think would be helpful to clarify that we're open to, to those revisions. Any questions?
I'm just curious with the transportation piece, if there's been any discussion with bus drivers as to what their response is to that, because I can see the pros and cons of transportation. I mean, I can see that in some ways it probably occupies children, in other ways it causes a lot of problems.
Yeah, we debated, we debated the whole bus thing, and that might be something we would want to get information from them before. I mean, Chris does a lot of school districts, and maybe they have experience with this. We haven't talked with them yet, unless you have, yeah. So, I mean, we might as well reach out to them and see what their experience has been. I am worried about the supervision of that. I mean, you're trying, we want them to drive.
Right.
So we'd have to, let's see what, we can get some feedback from them.
I'd like to know when they're, be there, because I just, yeah, again, I think there could be some pros and cons to it, so.
It is a great question, and we went back and forth, yeah.
I had, I mean, I don't know if it's a question or statement, but, so why can't they use it during lunch? Like, I understand the classes, I agree with that, like, we should try to keep it, but them from using them during class, but I don't understand why they have 20, 30 minutes for lunch. What if a parent is trying to reach them? What if there's an emergency? You know what I mean? There's, so are we going to have the office just constantly call people out of class because their mom needs to tell them, Suzie's in the hospital, we need to pick you up? Like, you know, I think it's a little too restrictive to say, from here to here, absolutely no cell phones. I agree that's a distraction in class, and I don't know how to go about that, but I feel like, like you go on cold turkey for no cell phones for six, seven hours, I feel that's like a little bit too restrictive from both ends. The parents trying to get a hold of the kids, or, you know, the kid might just need to reach out to the parent or something.
I think those are the questions that people will, will ask. You know, I think that, I, I think that going back to some of the articles that Director Namm has provided, the book that Director Namm has provided, I think, I, I don't want to speak for you, but, I, I mean, in terms of the benefits of being able to put that thing away and actually talk to people at lunch, or, you know, I, I'm not as concerned. Yes, there's information sometimes that I think students and parents communicate, baseball game got canceled because of rain, you know, a quick text to mom about, you know, hey, that game got canceled. But we also have other methods of getting information out like that. I wouldn't say that, I mean, I don't, I don't know what gets communicated back and forth on a daily basis. I think we've tried, I think we've tried to do a common sense approach. We certainly restricted it more than, than it was a couple of years ago, but I think we continue to see problems, and I, you know, I don't, I, ultimately though, I think that it's been expressed by multiple board members, which, so I'll let you guys do most of the talking here, that we, that felt we needed to at least put together a draft for discussion. And if the board decides they don't want to go that direction, I, I mean, we're, we're here to, as administrators, to do whatever the board decides in a case like this because it is a policy. So, you know, we're, we're trying to provide, answer any questions that we can answer, but there's certainly been enough folks that have expressed, I'm ready to be done with it, that we felt we needed to at least work on a draft of a policy. So I'll let board members do the rest of the, you know.
Yeah, I, I think from my perspective, I think the key here is consistency and clarity. We need to have a policy that's consistently applied and that is very clear. And I think, when, when I look at policy, the more carve-outs you make, the more areas you introduce potential issues for staff, faculty administration, for enforcement. Regarding the question of emergencies, the, the policy does clearly state that, that the building principal can, can, I'm trying to find it, can set aside and make exceptions for use during, for emergency purposes. And, and I think, you know, a student can contact teacher administrator and say, there's an emergency, and, and get permission to use a cell phone. But yeah, I think if, if there's an issue from mom and dad from home that the child needs to be informed of, then they should call the office. And that's the way that I view this clarity and consistency for a policy. So that's what happens in elementary school, that's what happens in the middle school. It's, it's just a consistent approach for the entire district, from my point of view.
So you don't think there'll be any pushbacks from the parents who track their kids on 360 to make sure they made it to school that day? Like, if they see that their.
I don't know.
Phones at home, like, I don't know where my kid is, if he's actually home or at school.
I don't know.
I just think there'll be some pushback. I, I'm.
There may be.
I 100% agree that if it, you know, I don't know how to do, go around it. I've seen it at work, so that's why, you know, the people who have a no policy for phones at work, they're so much more productive than the people that are just on their phones all day. But I'm just, like, even when I was in school, okay, we had a payphone if we needed to pick, you know, somebody to pick us up or, or something, you know? I feel like it's so hard to say, oh, you know, nothing, zero, zero phone.
So I, you know, I can, I can be prepared next month to discuss it, but, you know, I've looked at districts that have done this, and the efficacy of it has been very, very positive. There, there have been far fewer issues. There, there have been far fewer issues than we would anticipate. Most of the districts that employ it, yeah, there's a little bit of pushback at, at the beginning, there's, there's a little bit of resistance, but it has been pretty smooth for all the districts. And in fact, we essentially borrowed this from an existing policy for a, for a nearby school district, large school district that, that has employed this policy. And my understanding is that they've had very, very, very few issues with it. So, a, and I say this whenever we do any policies, I mean, the, the point of a policy is that it can be changed at any time. If, if we hit a point where, where we're being told by administration that this is not workable, then it, it behooves us to revise it again. From my point of view, I just think it's good to take this step and, you know, move forward and see how it goes. And if, and if I, if we run into issues, I think we have the ability, we have the ability to revise the policy whenever we need to do so.
Or you could revise it now before we vote on it.
We could.
Well, we're not voting on it right now, either.
Right, I know, not today.
We have time to discuss that.
So, I mean, there was no thought about, like, just have them turned off in the locker, and you can't access it, you know, between school hours, beginning of the day and the end of the day? But is there too much, like, is there an issue with people sneaking the phones? Is that why?
So, again, 75% of the disciplinary issues that we have right now, with a fairly restrictive cellphone policy, have to do with electronic devices. So, this does not, this does not say that the student can't bring the cellphone to school. And also, we, we talked about, you know, whether we, we purchase the pouches or get the pouches from the state, we just, we decided to, to delegate that to administration. What we heard from administration is that that's not the step that they want to do right now. So, the student will have the phone theoretically with them. It is, it is up to them to, to follow the policy in the handbook.
Okay, I thought I read it as they were never not allowed to have phones at all.
It just, it prohibits the use. And that does not prohibit them from having it on them. So if a parent still wanted to track their kid to make sure they made it to school, they would still be able to do that.
So they can still call after school, say, hey, I need a ride, come pick me up.
Yeah, and after school, after school year is okay anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah. It would just be during the, the time of the instructional day, or as of right now, transportation.
If you're left to have a phone here at all.
Yeah, I, I mean, the way I read it, 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 we're, the policy as it reads right now just prohibits the use of electric, electronic cellular devices. And I also want to make that clear, this isn't a cellphone policy. This is an electronic device policy. So this includes all other kinds, or all their sorts of electronic devices, whether it be an iPad or whatever. So it's not just a cellphone policy. So, I mean, I, I agree with President Naom in that, you know, I, I've, I've watched videos, I've watched, you know, students be interviewed that are in schools that instituted a similar policy, and the students themselves said, at lunchtime, it became a conversation, rather than everybody with their head down into their devices. And so, some of the students admitted that, you know, they were, they didn't like the policy initially, but as they went through the day, or went through the school year, by the end of the school year, they all appreciated it. Most of them said how they were much more productive. So, I mean, there's, there's been a lot of studies done that show, you know, the, the great benefits of restricting use. Again, that the way, the way the policy, I read it right now, it doesn't, it doesn't prohibit a student having the electronic device on them, on their person, or in their bookbag, it just restricts their ability to use it during the day.
How does that affect, like, the laptops and stuff, the school issues?
Well, the school laptop is one thing, that's, I mean, that, this, these are personal electronic devices.
It specifically states that in the policy, and also, just to point it out, the sentence, "Specific guidelines outside of those listed in policy for the use of personal electronic devices on district property and when attending school-sponsored activities outside of the school day can be located in the school's student handbook." Our thinking there is that we don't want, I, when, when we drafted this, we don't want to dictate to the administration what that looks like. That's best for the administration to, to identify and define in the handbook. So the student, before the school year, will know exactly what the parameters are for the use of that electronic device outside of the school day. So when the school day ends, there will be, the handbook will, will express what, what they can do.
And just speaking from conversations with Dr. Ebert, he intends to, to recommend the handbook that students would be able to utilize it. So you're here for practice, and you, it's time to get picked up, you would be able to, to utilize that, or, you know, you're, you're headed home, I'm gonna be home in 10 minutes, you know, you know, that kind of thing. So he doesn't, he doesn't intend to prohibit it at that point in time.
What about, let's just say, like, a special needs child who has a different communication-
It, it provides for that in the policy.
I know we are, you talked about leaving it to the administration to decide whether or not we go the, the bagged route, but I'm kind of afraid of, if we institute this policy and don't have a bag, some kind of, you know, bag that students can put their cellphones in, that we could just creep back into the situation we're in.
We, we intend to, if the board passes the policy, it's my intention to apply for the grant to get the bags. How we use the bags is, remains to be seen. Do, if we, we don't, right now, have a desire to use them globally, but if we have a student issue that they, that they have theirs out, we, we very possibly could utilize them in very specific situations like that. But maybe we will decide as we look at it. The bags have not been, we have not seen successful implementation of the bags, as much as we've seen successful implementation of the policy as a whole. There's been people that have gotten the bags, tried to use them, and then gone away from them. There's been a lot of people that, that, that don't use the bags. I know of a school district in Western Pennsylvania that tried the bags. I don't know of many others. Do you know of any others? Yeah.
I think I've heard that, I think there are only two or three that even tried.
There aren't many, and I don't know that the ones that tried it were successful, for a variety of reasons. But I do believe, well, the state's gonna give them to us, I might as well get something from the state, but the, I, I do believe there's a potential usage there in certain situations.
Yeah, okay. I just, sometimes you hear about just the differences in teachers' approach to this, whether or not, you know, this, this teacher lets me use phones in class, this one doesn't.
And this will end that. There's no teacher discretion here.
Zero.
Yeah, there is in the, and the way their policy is written in, well, the way it's written in the handbook based upon the policy's ability to, there is teacher discretion, there will not be teacher discretion, except for in the case of an emergency, anything outlined there for, you know. The one thing that is not included in here that we need to add is an individualized health plan. It does talk about IEPs, it does talk about 504s, but we also need to add individualized health plans. Oh, good.
Yeah, because it does say, "The building administrator may grant approval for possession and use of an electronic device by a student for the following health, safety, or emergency reasons." So that health should be spelled out, and then, as may be provided in an IEP or section 504.
So just for just a good discussion, I think I'm not, I think it is a great idea in general, I'm just trying to look at all the specifics. So you're saying if they're allowed to bring the phone, and they say they have an off in the bookbag, but they sneak it during class, and you're saying it's not gonna be up to the teacher, how can it not be up to the teacher? Because the teacher's either gonna, like, you need to go to the principal's office, you're in trouble for this, or you're not. So how, I mean, I, I like the idea of a bag, like, if the kids could put all their phones in a central location, and that kind of keeps the teachers-
Right now, the teacher has the ability to give permission for a student, let's say who's done with their work, or even an assignment, to utilize their cellphone. This policy will remove that possibility, just like any other disciplinary situation. If a teacher is not enforcing something that a student, if a student is doing something that they should be disciplined for, and the teacher's not enforcing it, then that, then that becomes an issue with, that we'll have to address with the teacher. But it takes all the, there's no, there's no gray area there. There's no more discretion. It is, they are not out. And if you're not enforcing that in your classroom and we find out, then we would have to address that.
Director Kreiser, do you have anything to add?
I am very pleased with the way I think the policy came out. The only thing I think we may want to consider is school-issued electronic devices on transportation to and from school. That's something that I have heard some stories of misuse of the-
Of school issued.
Behavior-related issues from, so that might be something that we may want to discuss, or, you know, maybe that's something we can take to the bus drivers or Kreiser, see what, what they feel, how they feel about that.
And that may already be covered in a current policy, we'll have to look, yeah. Thanks. Any other discussion, questions?
Okay, so, I'll put this on again next week. If anybody has additional thoughts, you can look through it again, you know, again, it's a draft. And then, if there's any changes that the board wishes to, to do, we'll have the committee try to, to reflect those changes, and then we'll bring a policy back in June. In the meantime, if people want to come and talk about it, they can. Right?
Yep, yep. And I would, I would encourage everybody, you know, during the course of the next week, two weeks, three weeks, email, so that we, we know what the concerns are, and obviously we can't deliberate over email, but please feel free to address what you think the issues are, and if we determine that it looks like, you know, that's, seems to be the will of the board, then we'll, we'll make an effort to, to adjust and modify. Okay?
Okay. Another policy that we have done some presentations, research on, that we need to, we need to discuss is AI, the use of AI in education. And if you remember a couple months ago, I think it was February, Mr. Kless back there did a presentation for us on it, and we've been taught, we don't have a policy currently. We had talked about two different types of policies, you know, one that's very restrictive, and one that is more of a responsible use of, of artificial intelligence. I'm going to be truthful, I think education has evolved incredibly quickly in this area, even since last February. You may be aware of the executive order for school districts for President Trump, for school districts to be educating students on artificial intel, the use of artificial intelligence. And we haven't gotten, I haven't gotten any language on what exactly that means for us yet. But when, when we sat, and we talked about this recently, a restrictive policy basically saying you can't use it, or students can't use it, or it's very limited, is just not where we are in education. Professional development is all over the place. I know Dr. McAdery just attended a PSBA webinar, was it PSBA? P-A-S-A, PASA, webinar the other day about it, and it is, it is exploding. I don't see a way, we'll do it if, if the board would like to, but I don't see a way that we can say we're not going to use artificial intelligence. What I think we need to do is put together a policy at this point to, to make sure that we are implementing it in a way that we are teaching kids how to use it responsibly, that is not asking it a question and then copying and pasting it into a, an essay. That is not how you use it responsibly. And then, teachers also, I think there's way, used to, you, you try-
Sounds like my daughter.
Yeah. And, and there's many benefits, I think, for teachers as well. And it's, it seems to be growing exponentially. I'm, I always felt good about my use of technology, and now, all of a sudden, I feel old because this has come out, and I don't really fully understand all the capabilities, to be honest with you, I haven't been able to keep up with it. But, so there is a policy there that I don't, it is not, the wording on it is definitely not in its final version, but it's a draft that starts to get into what the responsibilities of the district would be to use artificial intelligence responsibly, the training that would be, like, we're not going to just open it up and allow students, that there will be training provided to both our staff and our students, and things like that. I believe that's the way that we should go. However, if you'd prefer a more restrictive or a non-use of AI, then let us know, and we will work to prepare that. Otherwise, we would take suggestions, and again, bring this back to the policy committee and try to put together a draft for you to vote on in June. So, thoughts, comments?
I, I'm in full agreement for, to use it responsibly. I mean, I think it's the direction that things are going, I think people are using it, I think some direction and, and guidance in using it responsibly would be helpful to our students, but it's not going away. So, I think everybody's using it. It, it would be helpful for our students to even know how to better use it, really. So, it's a great tool.
I, I, I agree. I'm not in favor of a, like, restrictive policy. I, I, I would definitely like to make sure that our students understand how to responsibly use AI and not end up plagiarizing everything, but that would be my, that's my biggest concern, is just the students understand how to properly use it and cite it, even if they, you know. And I, I do have a, just another curiosity question. Is it, is AI being used at all at the elementary level? Do you see it being used there at all? I mean, I would definitely say teachers are using it. But not necessarily a student use in elementary? I don't know that we're asking students to use it, I'm not aware of that, but I think kids use it. I mean, they're, they're aware of it. Right? I see, I see the parent of an elementary student over there who's shaking her head vigorously, that her child is using it. So then, because normally, when I was reading this initially, I was reading it primarily in the context of the secondary school, but then I started questioning, we need to make sure that we're also teaching elementary students how to properly use AI then as well. So make sure that's being incorporated in, in the learning process as well. I mean, I look at it similarly to learning, understanding what plagiarism is, and, you know, in the old days, it was open a book and copy word for word what was in the book. And now it's, now it's computer version of that, but understanding how it can help you, but also understanding the importance of reading it with some discretion and, and being able to alter it when needed.
Just a point of clarification, everything we're discussing here is generative AI, and the policy would be about generative AI, which is slightly different than, like, your Google Assistant when you're doing a search online, that's not necessarily generative AI. So I think we're using the term AI in a general sense, but it is very specific to the generative AI components that are out there currently.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, I, I confess that when it comes to generative AI, I'm a bit of a Luddite, but I agree that I think this is the future, and we need to, we need to embrace it with, with proper controls, and I think the good thing about this policy is that it establishes a committee, it's gonna set up, you know, the generative AI that is approved for use in the school. We've got Kirk to make sure that the AI doesn't take over the entire school, Terminator style.
No pressure, no pressure.
But, but, but to my prior point about policies, I, and I, I shared this with Dr. Messinger the other day, I, this is a policy I think we're probably gonna have to look at every year, if not every six months, just to make sure that, that we're keeping up to date, that the policy is, is keeping on track. But I think it's good for us to get ahead of this, to the degree that we're ahead of anything, with regard to generative AI.
So that, okay, so it sounds like we're okay with moving forward with a draft of, again, we'll use this, we've already looked at it a little bit, but it's, I would not say it's in its final state, but we'll prepare something and have it ready for you for, for June.
Yeah, Kirk, I expect you to be our Sarah Connor.
Oh, boy. Yeah, okay. Okay. Finally, then, in your folders, there are several ballots, the CTC board ballot, the voting delegate for PSBA, and the board membership ballot. I think Mrs. Hartman needs you to do the, well, I shouldn't say that, one's not a I think Mrs. Hartman needs you to do the, well, I shouldn't say that, one's not a ballot. One is we need to appoint two individuals to attend the Delegate Assembly for PSBA. I believe that you're in charge of the appointing of this.
And that needs to be done today or next week?
Mrs. Hartman, can, is that the delegates? Next week, you got till next week?
Great, okay, very good.
But I do believe she needs the ballots tonight.
Okay.
And then, just to draw your attention to one thing that's in there, the annual mandate, state mandate book is in there. If you ever get anybody complaining about anything that schools are doing in terms of, you know, staffing or budgets or whatever, this book is so, this book is ridiculous. This is, these are the state mandates that we are responsible for as a public school. And I gotta tell you, when, it's, I was telling these, my, the cabinet members, four years ago, when this mandate book was first done, I thought it was ridiculous then, and it was sixty-some pages, and it's now ninety-one pages, because in four years, we've now added that many more mandates. It, it, I don't know, I, it's not easy reading, it's not fun reading, but it certainly gives you a good feel for the things that, you know, the amount of reporting, the amount of things that we have to track, the amount of, you know, there's just a lot of stuff in there that, that we've been asked to do. You know, there's, well, I won't go on my soapbox, but anyway, that's there for your enjoyment. And then finally, some dates for you.
Point on the dates, I believe the first one is actually tomorrow. It was moved due to the potential of the power outage at the secondary building.
You're correct. Oh, and while we're on that topic, we, we just received information this afternoon that as of today, we are still on for Thursday. So I'm still not, I'll be more comfortable tomorrow if I get that confirmation. But that is good news, because by this time last week, they had canceled Monday already, but MedEd is still planning on Thursday. It appears that any rain in the forecast won't be until the evening, they will be wrapped up for the day by then. So as of right now, we are still good for Thursday, and I'll get an email out to all of our staff, employees tomorrow, and then we'll get confirmation out to our families as well.
It's just one day.
It is my, Thursday and Friday.
Dr. Reese, what was the, what was the date, what was the event that's impacted?
May seventh.
Secondary art show and spring band concert are now, May seventh instead of May eighth.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, one of the, any, any questions regarding any of these information items? I just wanted to say one thing that, you know, one of the questions that I get a lot is, why do we have so many administrators? And I think the state mandates is, is a, to me, this is an excellent example of why administration is in higher demand now than maybe when we were in school, because these are not things that you can look at a teacher or a series of teachers, a group of teachers, and say, you, you have to spend all of your time working on this. So thank you for sharing that, that's just my opinion. Okay, any other questions, issues? Okay, hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Great, thank you.